I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty just as for all.
Row call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demirz.
Here.
Robert DeCina.
Here.
Anthony DeBona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Denise Russ.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. I'll turn the next section over to Mark for recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a letter that I received from Chief Josh Berniger, and I'd like to just read it. And today we'd like to recognize Detective Mark Conway, who is sitting in our audience with his wife, Betsy. And Chief Berniger writes, "It is my distinct pleasure to nominate Watertown Police Detective Mark Conway for a Town Council Recognition Award. Detective Conway is a 21-year veteran of the Watertown Police Department, of which the last 12 years have been at the rank of detective. As a detective, Mark Conway has specialized in investigating crimes against children, including child abuse, sexual abuse, human trafficking, child pornography, and identifying and arresting child predators on the Internet. Detective Conway handles each and every case with true passion and empathy, and in so doing, has been recognized throughout the state as an expert in this area of criminal investigation. Detective Conway serves on the Connecticut Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force and is also a task force officer with the Department of Homeland Security's Child Exploitation Unit. Detective Conway is called upon around the state to train other law enforcement personnel as well as prosecutors in this focused area of law. Detective Conway has received numerous accolades for his tireless work in seeking justice for child victims. Most recently, the Watertown Police Department received a letter from the Connecticut State Police Detective Samantha McCord, who commands the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. In her letter, Detective McCord praises Detective Conway's patience and methodical investigations, stating, 'Detective Conway has been my primary point man for working not only his agency's cyber tips, but advising other agencies in their handling of tips. Mark has also worked directly with other agencies to take dark web child porn cases to fruition with search warrants and arrests. Mark knows that child exploitation does not have jurisdictional restrictions. Recently, Mark discovered a repeat hand-on offender on the dark web and brought the investigation to an arrest in collaboration with the Waterbury Police Department. It is for his passion and dedication in keeping our children safe that I am honored to nominate Detective Mark Conway for recognition by the Watertown Town Council. Thank you for your time and consideration.' I would just like to say that a lot of people don't understand how much of this goes on in Watertown. We mostly think that it doesn't happen. The Watertown Police Department probably investigates 20 to 30 investigations surrounding these types of investigations. So for Mark Conway to be involved in this investigation for so long, he is well-deserving of this recognition. And we would also like to thank his wife, Betsy, for putting up with all the investigation that he has to do. Detective Conway, if you'd come up, I'd like to read the recognition.
And the recognition reads Certificate of Excellence, honoring Detective Mark Conway, given by the Watertown Town Council in recognition of Detective Conway's outstanding commitment and diligence to the citizens of the Town of Watertown in his role as detective in the Watertown Police Department. Recognition and appreciation are hereby bestowed upon Detective Mark Conway, dated Watertown, Connecticut, the 17th day of July, 2023. Signed, Jonathan Ramsey, Chairman, Watertown Town Council.
Thank you. Moving on to the motions for the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the June 19, 2023 special town meeting relative to the Board of Education appropriation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Three abstentions. Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the June 19, 2023 special town meeting relative to the appropriations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Same thing. Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 19, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions?
I make a motion to approve the June 19, 2023 special town meeting relative to water and sewer appropriation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Same thing. Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the June 27, 2023 special town meeting relative to Steel Brook Greenway appropriation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
And Rachel as well. Motion passes. In the Chairman's report, we have a couple different informational items in our packet. One dealing with a review of our health insurance fund, also a letter from Pierre Morin, Moran, as far as his resignation from Wetlands Board, and also a letter from Cheryl Johnson related to the paving of Hamilton Avenue. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Watertown Town Council, Mark Ramon, Town Manager, I just have a few updates regarding the past couple weeks. I'd like to thank Chief Bromley, Chief Berniger, and Public Works Director, Mr. Lukowski, for their efforts over the weekend. We received a substantial amount of rain, and all our department heads were out monitoring the storm. We had a last-minute call with the state on Saturday night, and I was very happy that everybody responded and jumped on that call so that we could better plan for the incoming rain. Thank goodness we didn't receive the rain that was predicted, and our neighboring towns did end up with a lot more rain than we did. So thank you for coming out and taking care of business. I would also like to just recognize Lisa Dalton again this year. She's applied for a grant for the historic document preservation. That's been awarded, and she's working through the process. I don't have a number on how much she's received at this point. We've entered into an ex-- we executed the Master Municipal Agreement for the Guernsey Town Road Project, so that project has been awarded, and we're moving forward with the process of that reconstruction of West Road and Guernsey Town Road. I have been working with CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. I've identified somebody to work with regarding your request for us to look at shared services with the Board of Education. We're working through a contract before I would bring it to the council to kind of review and understand what our request would be for this person to assist the town. And just an update regarding the water. We've received numerous complaints regarding dirty water in our water and sewer system. Waterbury had a break of their 42-inch line in the area of Thomiston. They're in the process of attempting to fix that. Some of the backflow has reached into our system, and some of our citizens are receiving browned water. It is safe for them to consume, but it's a very disturbing color. I can't imagine anybody would want to drink it unless they really had to. Additionally, we've send out, we've sent out two robo-calls to all water and sewer customers to be aware of the situation, and we will also send out additional social media posts so that we can notify all the citizens in town. The anticipated fix is sometime on Thursday or Friday, and then it will take a couple days for us to flush the system out so that the water is then returned to a clean type of water. And I think that's all I have for my manager's report.
Thank you. Under Subcommittee Reports, do we have any reports? The Senior Tax Relief Subcommittee will be meeting tomorrow at 5:30 to continue our discussions on that topic. Moving on to new business.
I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the use of various bidding cooperatives in the state of Connecticut for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can you explain that just a little bit? We're not going to be bidding, or we're going through a co-op?
We will be bidding. We could use the co-ops in addition to our bidding process. Things such as trucks, we may be going to a source well, or as we have in the past, we've purchased vehicles through the Department of Administrative Services with the state. So this is just giving us other opportunity to obtain lower pricing by combining together with other municipalities. But if we find that the prices are higher and it would benefit us to go to a bidding process, we're certainly going to do that.
So if we're going out for police cars or anything like that, it would go through, would we use this for cheaper, or we still go out to bid separately?
It's an option.
It would be an option. It would be an additional option for us to look at the types of co-ops that are available to us. I don't know much about what the police department does to get their cars, but I'm sure that they're going to look at these sources as well, because if they could shave $5,000 or $6,000 off each car, it would be beneficial to the Watertown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I make a motion to adopt the adoption of the guidelines for the conduct of town council meetings as it has been updated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Ann, am I reading this?
The guidelines read as follows. Purpose: The Town Council has a significant interest in conducting its meetings in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. To that end, the Town Council hereby enacts the following guidelines for the conduct of town council meetings. A. The Chair of the Town Council or any council member acting as Chair shall have control of the meeting at all times. B. All comments or questions by members of the public, council members, or staff are to be made through the Chair. C. There shall be a five-minute time limit per speaker per meeting, and it shall be called public comment. D. Public comment shall only be permitted if it is specifically listed as an agenda item for the meeting and only at the time when it is so listed. E. The Chair shall have the right to stop any speaker during public comment who is being repetitive or confrontational, who makes any personal rude or slanderous remarks about anyone, or who raises any issue concerning personnel matters. F. Any person failing to abide by these guidelines or who is otherwise disruptive of the process in the opinion of the Chair will be asked to stop immediately, and if the behavior persists, the Chair may ask them to leave the meeting or may have them removed. The guidelines for running the meeting shall be read at the beginning of public comment by the Chair.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah.
Gary?
Each person's only allowed five minutes in a meeting. Can they come up for a second time after everybody else spoke?
Five minutes total.
Total, oh, total. Okay.
This guideline we just received in this packet has one extra item than the original one we adopted, which is Item D. The public comment can only be permitted if it's specifically listed on the agenda. I need an explanation of that. Is that stating that anyone from the public can't come up and talk about anything that isn't on tonight's agenda?
That is correct.
But now you're limiting the people to come and speak.
No, sorry, I take that back. Public comment shall only be permitted if it is specifically listed as an agenda item for the meeting, and only at the time when it is listed. If you recall, when we have special meetings, there typically is not a public comment, public participation on the agenda. So here, tonight's meeting, toward the end of it, we do have our public comment. That is where they're able to speak. So if it's not specifically listed on the agenda, there is not a public comment for that meeting.
So tonight at public comment, they can speak about anything that isn't being talked about tonight? They're not limited?
Yep, as long as it doesn't go against any other part of the policy. That is correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I move to authorize the correction of, all right, tell me this word, Scrivener's Error in Ordinance 12-05-22-309, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Restrictions on Amplified Noise," as passed by the Town Council on December 5, 2022, as follows. Section 12-38, subsection 2 of the ordinance, provides, "No motor or recreational vehicle shall emit noise and excessive noise levels as specified in section 13-82 of this ordinance." The reference to section 1382 of this ordinance is incorrect, or is there is no section 13-8. Therefore, the notation should be corrected to indicate 12-41.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So the ordinance in general does not change except for the reference to section 12-41. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes. D. Discussion regarding the Watertown Centennial Memorial Fund, which is in place for the care and maintenance of the gazebo on the Watertown Green. Mark, fill in some of the blanks, but our understanding is the members of the Watertown Centennial Memorial Fund are low in number, and we need to get a couple more people there?
That's correct. From what I understand, the Historic District may have appointed somebody to that committee, and the last, the actual treasurer of the committee, and I apologize, I'm not prepared to speak in detail on this, is no longer living in Watertown. So there is some money in an account that is being held by that individual. He's asking that we, the Town Council, appoint somebody to that committee. If the Historic District appoints somebody, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, there's one other position, and I don't remember where it's.
Veterans Council.
Town Council.
Veterans Council.
Veterans Council, thank you. I believe that's one of our new committee members. We can then take that money and do the repairs on the gazebo. It would be, in my opinion, that the money should be taken back over by the town, and the town controlled the money, so that we don't run into this issue again. In addition, the town in the past has paid for all the repairs to the gazebo and really hasn't taken any money out of that fund. So $14,000 is not a lot of money compared to what the amount of repairs are. But I do think it is something, it's important for the town to maintain the maintenance of the gazebo, and we just move forward with the recommendations by Attorney Jessel.
So today, we need to appoint one more person from the Town Council?
Yes.
Yes.
Who is it?
Sorry.
It's the Historic District.
One second, one second. Paul, could you come up and just explain a little more?
So unfortunately, I didn't bring that file tonight, and I apologize. However, what we need to do is get a fully constituted board. Whoever needs to appoint someone else, and I can get that information to the Town Council tomorrow morning. But more importantly, the town has been making all the repairs. There's $14,000 left. Lisa Carew, Park and Recs, has indicated that there are significantly more than $14,000 worth of repairs to be done at this point in time, and there will be ongoing repairs. My recommendation was that we get the, we get three new appointees in place, that we request that the appointees terminate their organization, and that the money be turned over to the Town Council to be put in a separate fund for gazebo maintenance and repair. There's really no mechanism in place for fundraising from this current organization, which there was obviously several years ago. So it seems like we should make use of this money. If we can budget it, fine. If we can't, we're going to have to make repairs to the gazebo as a town matter anyway.
So in your recommendation, as far as tonight is concerned, what should our actions be? Or wait to get more answers?
Unfortunately, I had a memo, and I didn't bring it with me tonight. I, it did.
I'm always questioning that the Town Council need to appoint an assistant.
Right, so my understanding is that the Town Council does not have an appointment, and that you need to make a new appointment to the committee so that we have a full committee with the request that the committee then vote to dissolve and put the money with the town, again, in a dedicated fund. I don't want the money to be mixed in the general fund.
So tonight's, make an appointment to this committee. Are there any motions? If not, I'll make one.
I got a question.
Yep, sir.
And the gazebo, is that the gazebo committee talking about? Now, we already have one representative. I know there's a vacant, and we have one person from the, from the veterans group or whatever. So you talk about dissolving that committee altogether and starting over?
Adding to.
Just adding to it?
Yeah.
I have the information if you want it.
I was, I was on the original gazebo committee. I'd like to serve on it again.
Okay, so my name's Jerry Pia. I've been up here for two years. I actually love your city. I'm in Stanford. I was very involved. I was on the Stanford Board of Education for 24 years. I was on the Board of Reps for eight years. I was the town chair. Ran a community center for 40 years. I actually left a message at Mark's office. Nobody ever called me. I was in his office. But I don't know. If you guys just want to give the money to the city, then that's fine. But the Historical Society, I don't know if you know any of that. My wife and I, we sing a lot up here. We're at the gazebo either every Thursday or sometimes Wednesday because there's been so much rain. So we sing there for free. We have a really good time. The gazebo's really nice. So I'm the new musical director at the Methodist Church. Sue sings in the choir. Ivan is the president of the Historical Museum, and they asked me since I was there and I was involved with the gazebo. And your Park and Rec Committee here, your Park and Rec Department is phenomenal, phenomenal. I tell them that all the time. So if Lisa Carew would be your, your person from the city to Town Council, the Veterans Committee, I met with them yesterday, the Veterans Council, not the Veterans Committee, the Veterans Council, all the different VFWs, if they would, they're going to go back to their respective people and have a meeting. They don't have a meeting again in August. They wouldn't do it until September, and then the three of us could sit down. And if we could help out with repairs, that would be great. If we can raise money, I ran three different nonprofits. I'm not saying I can raise $50,000, but I think it's worth a shot to be, at least let the committee do something for a little while. I think, honest to God, you got a great town here. It's really, really fantastic. The people are unbelievable. Everybody's very, very, very nice, and we've tried to do some things here because we really love being up here. But I think at least wait until we put the committee together, but that's not going to be until the end of September. You'll have to vote on a person, and the Veterans Council has to vote on a person. Right now, I'm actually the only person on because there's a question about whether it is, one of the other people is actually on or not. But sorry, I just, but I do have something from the Town Clerk's Office that's.
I have, I have all that.
Stage who, who the three people, that's the three people. I'm sorry, I'm Jerry.
Right, I'm Paul.
Hi, Paul.
Nice to meet you.
Paul, do you have anything to add?
Listen, I, you know, again, I don't think, number one, that you guys are prepared to make an appointment at this point in time. We have one other appointment that needs to be made. If, if they want to get together and try to fundraise, fine. But the bottom line is that according to Lisa's, the information that Lisa Carew has given us, significantly more than $14,000 worth of repairs are currently required. So again, my recommendation was based on the fact that the money available wouldn't even take care of the current repairs, and the Town of Watertown is going to end up doing it anyway. My only caveat in my memo was that that money should not be put into the general fund, but should be earmarked specifically for, now, if the committee wants to get together and start fundraising again, that's fine. They don't necessarily have to dissolve, but at some point in time, the $14,000 needs to go into the, to the gazebo, because that's what it's intended for.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, Paul, my only question is, it's a 501(c)(3), so does it say that, does this have to be terminated, or is it going to be dispersed to the town in a separate fund?
Actually, the, there was, there was actually a court ruling that said that if they dissolved, the money could go to the Town of Watertown. Originally, that was not the case, but they actually went to court and got that done. The corporation was set up by Bill Barante, who is obviously no longer around. Most of the people who were involved, not all of them, because Joe Massey's still around, and he was in charge of it. Oh, Mary Ann's still here.
Yeah. I'm still here.
Sorry, Mare. You know, so a good number of the people who were involved in the creation of this organization are no longer here. Not much has happened with this organization in a lot of years. I'm not going to guess how many, but I would, if I was going to estimate, it would be more than 20. The town has been doing all the repairs up until now.
I commend the gentleman that just spoke to us about his interest and efforts to, to raise money or to do something, but I don't personally believe that's the way to go. I was on that original committee, and over the years have watched what's happened. And there isn't any way to continually raise the money that's needed to keep that in repair and keep it the way we want it to be in the center of town. I believe our Park and Rec Department does a wonderful job there, and I think they should oversee it, and the funds should be, the committee should be disbanded, and the funds turned back to the town so we can do whatever we need to do, however much it costs.
Unfortunately, Ms. Rosa, the decision to dissolve would be the committee's.
I understand that.
So it could be a recommendation from the Town Council, but not a direction.
Right, I understand that.
Anyone else have any comments?
Come on, quick comment.
Sure.
And I appreciate it. I've been on your side. There's a lot of really great contractors up here that make, and stuff up there for free. It's from just being there, and, you know, we're just playing, you know, there's no place to park, so people just kind of like drive by and wave. People really love that, that structure, and I think people would, you know, give the council till the end of December to see if they can do anything. If they can't, then we meet in January and disband. I mean, I understand where, I understand where you're coming from. But if you can save the city some money, $14,000 plus whatever we can raise and whatever we can get done, Lisa's been great about saying this has, she gave me a list of stuff that had to get done, so. Anyway, I appreciate you letting me talk.
My recommendation, which I'm not sure is the same as everyone else, is to hold off until the next meeting to appoint anyone, unless there's any objection from Town Council and/or Town Manager, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to 9E.
I move to authorize the Town Manager to execute an agreement between the Town of Watertown and Main Street LLC on behalf of the Watertown Town Council for the development and purchase of property located at 666-686 Main Street, Watertown.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, I guess we'll start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So basically, I just wanna kinda summarize where the last two years have, how we've gotten to where we are today. And, let me see here. So if we start with our plan of conservation and development, basically, the plan, Plan of Conservation Development was developed in 2017 and adopted in 2018. And basically, the recommendations of such a plan are drawn from data, independent analysis, and the knowledge and goals of the community and government. The town spent a lot of time to understand what our community needed and what our community and residents wanted. So in the P O C D, the vision statement, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it basically gave us instruction that, that states, "Over the next 10 years, Watertown will offer a high quality of life that focuses on its walkable, mixed-use village centers and surrounding residential neighbors." So basically, we're trying to build that walkability community that was based in the responses from the P O C D. On page 2-9 of the P O C D, it basically talks about some of the elements surrounding the Main Street area. And we're talking specifically about the Watertown Main Street area now from the French Street to Route 6. And in the last sentence of this paragraph, the P O C D is recommending that additional investments in a gateway signage, streetscape, and improvements, and shared parking areas can position the area of economic growth over the next decade. So as I move through these slides, basically, I wanna try and kinda culminate that this is a lot of money to be spent. And as we look at dollars and cents, it's more than just that. We have to look at it, the perspective of where we wanna go as a town, how we wanna increase the safety on Main Street, and actually how we come down to making this deal work. So back in 2016, 2018, the town created a Main Street Committee. They conducted a road safety audit in 2018. They implemented short and midterm goals. And I'll go through a few of those in a moment. They met with Connecticut DOT and the NVCOG to explain our, explain our plan and how we move forward. We did some RSA follow-up studies and concept designs. We've had additional meetings with our citizens, and we got feedback from them. The Main Street Committee met again in August of 2020, and we had an additional public meeting in 2022. So the road safety audit, short-term goals. We accomplished quite a few of these. We repaired some of the signal equipment. Tree trimming replacements occurred very ha-, quickly. This is all the low-hanging fruit that we went after regarding the results of this road safety audit. Reduced sign clutter. There's still more work to be done there. Signal head opposite woodriff. That is currently in a steep grant. We're ready to go out to bid with that over the next 30 to 60 days. Enhanced parking signage. We have reviewed that and made some improvements. And we, we have in our steep grant an updated traffic signal. Our midterm goals is basically looking at the enhanced streetscape, shifting crosswalk at Depot Street, which we have not accomplished yet because we're waiting for the bigger plan. When we received the $3 million through Congresswoman Johanna Hayes's office, we talked about creating a master plan so that we basically could look at this whole roadway system from the Waterbury Line to the Route 6 line and basically understand a consistent conceptual, conceptual plan as we pick away and develop these areas. We have the ideas of the mid-block crossings, consider one-way streets we've talked about, and evaluate the sidewalks at St. John's. So the long-term goals was a big piece of this. And at the time when we conducted this study in 2018, we didn't really have the money to invest in any off-street parking. And during COVID, we received $6.4 million. And the council put together a ARPA committee. That ARPA committee not only met several times to kinda come up and give the council recommendations on the usage of the ARPA funds, but we also conducted a survey of our members and, of our citizens. And of that survey, I believe there was 590 respondents. And I, in another slide, I'll give you the percentage just so you can have an idea of how we got to wanting to improve the parking on Main Street. So our planned and completed projects. So we have the 2021. We had Echo Lake Road signal replaced by the Connecticut DOT. There was no cost to the, to the town. In 2020, we applied for a steep grant, which is gonna create, involve the installation of the rotating beacons. And I know you're probably sick and tired of me talking about this, but we're right at this level to get it over the top and get this done by the beginning of next construction season. In 2022, we applied for a LoSiP project, which is the ADA sidewalk grants that we spoke about earlier in the earlier meeting. In 2022, we applied for a steep grant, and we rewarded $256,000 with a $60,000 match from the town. So we have about $320,000. And I do have a picture of that project so you, I can remind you what that project is. 2022, we have a trail grant, which is supporting the Steel Brook Greenway design. And then in 2023, next, by next Friday, we'll be applying for a connectivity grant of $800,000 to push back the wall at St. John's and create a safe walking environment for the students of St. John's and the students from Taft School that do walk that corridor often. So the ARPA survey in 2021, and I apologize for the size. I had difficulty. I lost my presentation. Had to recreate it last minute this afternoon. But if you take the last three lines, which the survey says extremely important, "The idea of acquire property on Main Street in Watertown to address parking and safety", it was about a 46% response of those, of those 590 individuals that responded. If you add the center line, it raises it up to the 67% of what our townspeople actually think we should have used that ARPA money on. So this is another piece of the puzzle. This is part of that steep grant, where you see the brownish color improvements in the parking that is Hemingway Park Road, which is right out in front of the town hall. We're gonna make a portion of that one-way, which will increase parking in that area for businesses. And as we, you know, continue through this presentation, it's really important for us to provide this parking for, from a safety standpoint. I mean, that's the end of, the end result for us. This is just a conceptual drawing of what it may look in front of St. John's as we push that wall back and we're able to get an ADA ramp installed there with a safe walking area for students. And there are all, actually, there's enough room there to create a snow shelf so that when the plows come through in the winter, we still have a safe walking area for the students as they move through that area. So, back to the meat and potatoes. 680 Main Street, Greenberg Property. So just before our meeting today, I was advised, and I was not aware of this, that in 2012, the town actually went after this property, and they applied for a grant to purchase it and improve it to create 20 parking spaces. So in 2012, the town was looking to put a $150,000 match and go after a $500,000 grant to develop this property and, and produce 20 parking spots. That's just food for thought. It's very difficult to negotiate a, a deal, being a public entity. A lot of information is given out and gets out. And I struggled with whether this deal was worth it. And I came up with some numbers to, just for informational purpose so everybody could wrap your head around this, as I did, as we move forward. So if we're looking, I apologize. I, I wasn't able to get this. This is an overlay document, so it's just not an easy document to work with. So they have a tough time loading. So basically, the lower portion on the right-hand side of the screen is a lot number two, labeled Lot Number Two. That is actually two lots. That's the original lot that Mark Greenberg has the building on, which contains Westbury Music. We're all aware of that location. And then the, if you go northbound, there was an, there's an additional lot there that used to house a, I believe, a dentist. Attorney's office. Those, the intention of this purchase is to take those two properties, combine them, and divide them off of the main lot, Lot Number One, which is located to the rear of the property. With our deal, Mr. Greenberg will provide us easements to get entrance and exit through his easement on the north side of that diagram, and then the ingress and egress along the post office. We are also working to get egress from the front of the parking lot, right on the Main Street, and that would be a southbound turnout. So it would be no left turn, but a right turn to facilitate traffic in and out of that area. So this is the, the proposed design. It, we are looking at 48 to 52 spaces. Of those spaces, eight of those spaces will contain EV chargers. That is part of Connecticut General Statute that as you develop new municipal properties, parking locations, you have to add EV chargers. There will be a certain amount of lighting in the property. There will be water in the property. And we've designed it so that the flow of maintenance will be at a minimal. We do have some plantings with some raised beds for aesthetic purposes. And we are gonna be piped in for our EV chargers. And if the town council at some point decides that we wanna charge for, for parking, we will have it pre, not pre-wired, but pre-piped so that we can install some unit to charge for the parking. There will also be benches out towards the Main Street to, again, to encourage our citizens to become more, you know, utilize the walkability of the downtown area. So just to give some real numbers here. On the current assessment in 2018, the building was assessed at $157,000 approximately. The .7 acres which we will be purchasing was valued at $248,000 for a rough total of approximately $405,000. As I said, in 2012, the town was willing to spend $650,000 to develop 20 spaces. I spoke with the person who was doing our reevaluation, or actually, the assessor spoke with that person, and they kinda did an income-cost approach to look at this property. So they estimated the square footage, the property of the building to be 13,472 square feet at a $70 a square foot rate. They came up with a total of $943,000 with a 30% depreciation. I'm not an appraiser, so I'm just going on what the numbers they were giving to me. So that comes down to $660,000 plus the $240,000 for the value of the land gives you an approximate estimate of $900,000. The appraiser felt strongly that that estimate value of the property is between $900 and $1 million. The engineering department went through a cost build-out for this project. For us to build this, to purchase the property, if we were to purchase it separately and then develop it independently, it would cost us between $750,000 and $800,000. So whatever the price point of purchasing this property plus the development, and that's what your estimated cost would be for the town. As a summary, looking at our P O C D, our RSA study, and just the thought process of what the survey gave us for information, all the discussions we had with our business people down on Main Street. You know, I think this is a project that we should move forward on. That's my personal opinion. As a citizen and as the town manager, I think it will change the, the whole area of the downtown area. It would hopefully rejuvenate and create better business or better business opportunity for our current business owners. So we're consistent in, in with our P O C D. We're consistent with the RSA study. And we're consistent with what those individuals who responded to our survey. This is a big economic development piece, so it's a tremendous asset for our businesses. It's us investing in ourselves. And we anticipated that, over the last two years, we've received $4.4 million in grants. That's our steep grants, the, the grants from Congresswoman Hayes's office. And it positions us to receive more money as we move forward, as we, you know, go after these grants. And at the moment, I'm gonna ask our representative, Mr. Paletta, to come up and kinda give us his insight from the state's perspective for us to do all this work. So it's a change in investment for the improvement of Watertown, and it's consistent with our ARPA survey and recommendations. Mr. Paletta, if you would just kinda give us your insight from the state's perspective?
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Okay. So, you know, in speaking with the town manager, we had a very lengthy conversation about this parcel. And, you know, as somebody who's been involved, obviously, as a counselor, but now as a state rep, the, probably the most important, the most important thing that we've tried to focus on is economic development in this town. And I don't think anyone can disagree with that. But one thing that merchants, people who visit our town, people who live in our town have said that the downtown area does not have enough parking. And it's always been a bone of contention. We've never been able to point these folks in the right direction so that they can be satisfied. We've seen businesses come and go. We have a wonderful restaurant up there right now, Fino Pizza. We have some other restaurants that have moved in. But from an economic development standpoint, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for someone looking to invest in our town to come to the downtown area if there's no parking. So that's number one. Number two, it's a safety issue. We can recall, a number of years ago, we had a couple pedestrian hits on Main Street. So that prompted my office to get involved prior to the town manager being here to order a road safety audit. We had Commissioner Giuletti come down from Hartford. He gave a wonderful presentation at the police department. Excuse me. We gave a wonderful presentation to the commissioner about the need for better signage on the road, more paint. Council member De Sina and myself and another individual took a ride up to, to the DOT, and we met with the commissioner in his office, and we spent a lot of time there discussing the need for more safety mechanisms along Main Street. Some flashing beacons, widening the road. A lot of things were thrown out there. But what the individual said was, when you have parking on both sides of the road, that becomes a safety issue. Because when the snow gets piled up, people park further towards the center of the road. So now you have people trying to get in their car, cars passing, and it really becomes an issue with safety. So as a result of that road safety audit, we found that we really needed more parking. And then as a result of getting all of that paperwork in, the town manager, the present town manager, was able to go after a grant and, of course, get all the paperwork in to the Congresswoman's office to receive ARPA funds that we are now, of course, trying to move into this particular project. But I'll just say, from a state perspective, if you wanna be competitive with grants, you have to show progress. So this would be a tremendous step forward in terms of trying to go after future grants. So if the, the town manager, at, at the request of the council, wants to submit, let's say, a steep grant, Small Town Economic Assistance Program grant, one of the things and, and highlights we would put in that steep grant, if it was to be used to better Main Street, Watertown, or Oakville, would be that we are now investing in parking. We're investing in safety mechanisms. We're investing in, in, you know, better landscape for our downtown. So we need this additional funding to complete the project or maybe complete that sidewalk in front of St. John's or whatnot. So it would, it would behoove us to approve this project, to approve the funding for this project and, and have the town manager go forward to purchase the property because I think it would help us in the future go after more grants that will even better our town and our business district. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I, I do, I am in support of this. But at the request of the town manager, I just wanna stress the importance that when we have a project and we move forward with it, it helps us go after funding for future projects. And we've seen a lot of communities receive funding in Connecticut. And we actually just received a steep grant to redo Hemingway Road here, which is gonna be hopefully completed in the next couple of years.
Yes.
Right? Okay? So that's one step in the right direction. But I think this would be a great project to adopt.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman May, Mr. Seacrest was not able to attend tonight, and Mr. Antonetti was unable to attend, for whatever reasons, they were not feeling well. Mr. Seacrest did provide me with a statement, if you don't mind, I'd like to read it into the record. This statement is in support of Item 9E on your agenda tonight. In my seventeen years as Economic Development Coordinator, one of my most vexing problems has always been the lack of adequate parking for the Main Street merchants, voiced by both the citizens and the merchants. Now through the diligent efforts of the town manager and the availability of some outside funds, this problem will be solved and the appearance of downtown will be greatly increased. This project, along with the road safety program, not only add additional parking spaces, but will make downtown Watertown more safe and attractive. I urge you to support, approve this project. Joseph Seacrest, Economic Development Coordinator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the town council? And...
No, I was just curious that, Mark, thank you for that. The, the ingress, the entrance to the parking, it's going to be an easement, right? So that's, I was just curious, who's going to be maintaining that easement? Maybe we don't have that, I don't know, if that's something that's got to be negotiated later? I don't know, because that's going to be Mr. Greenberg's property.
I don't want to speak out of turn, because we haven't actually went that far. Mr. Jessel?
Mr. Greenberg already has easements leading to Woodruff and to Main Street, and the contract simply provides that he will make them available to us. It does not impose any burden on us for maintenance.
So it's something he would maintain? And that's the way to enter, or you can enter it from Woodruff or Main Street?
Or Main Street. And it, it's entrance and egress.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? And just for the record, in the contract, it includes conduit for a parking meter and conduit for EV charging, but does not actually include either a parking meter or EV chargers. We'll look into that after the fact. Is that accurate?
That's correct. There's enough grants out there that I think that we could get the EV chargers without any cost to the town. We're working with a few vendors to work through that. And as far as the parking meter, there would be an additional fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars to actually buy a unit. So the cost is on the, is more minimal.
Anyone else?
I, I do, through the chair. Just a concern, and just really looking for your comfort level on where we stand with egress onto Main Street, that, you don't see any issues in getting the DOT to, to give us that curb cut there? And, and if, if we did run into a problem, would we, would we still be doing the project and just using the backside of the parking lot as your entrance and egress?
I think that the, the southbound exit egress down on Main Street is an important part to facilitate flow of traffic. I have reached out to the state of Connecticut, we've already applied for that curb cut. I went so far as to talk to the person who we have applied to and discuss the possibility of this being rejected. And he said that the state will do whatever it has to, to work with the town. But of course, there's never a promise with that. It's, he doesn't, he doesn't feel that this will be an issue for us to get that curb cut.
Of course. Okay, good. One, one other quick question. The, the contract, I mean, I didn't read through the whole thing, but if our town attorney, Mr. Jessel, is comfortable with it?
Yeah, the contract has gone through several iterations. I, I think that it adequately covers the town in terms of what we need to do and, and adequately imposes the burdens on Mr. Greenberg for what he needs to do.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. One other, one other quick question for, for Mark. The EV charging stations, you're, you're pretty comfortable with the grant money, that there's plenty of money out there to get those EV charging stations as part of the project?
I don't want to state, I was told these are free, but I was told that there is enough money out there to get us the EV chargers without cost to the town. You know, when pen goes to paper, obviously, sometimes things change. But there's definitely enough money out there for us to install those.
A lot of times, it depends on what brand and what the, what the agreement is.
Great. And, and thank you for that recap. That was, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Like you said, with the access of leaving, leaving the property on Main Street, it's going to be right turn only. I was wondering if we should have the same thing on Woodruff Avenue, right turn only, coming, coming out.
We haven't actually discussed that, because, I mean, it's, I don't think the... I'm going to have to give that some thought. I don't think that that's going to be too much of an issue. I mean, the, the post office uses it consistently. All the individuals who use the back property of Greenberg use it, and there hasn't been any issue. But we will, I will talk with the engineers to, to talk through that issue.
Well, just from my personal knowledge, as a former tenant of Mr. Greenberg's building in the back there, it's never been a problem, leaving there during in either direction. And, and frankly, there are a lot of people leaving there, but Woodruff Avenue doesn't get the kind of travel that Main Street does.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All oppose? Extinctions?
All abstain.
One abstention. Motion passes. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Extinctions? Motion passes. Moving on to public comment, I guess I'll reread what we said we would read. During the meeting, the Chair of the Town Council or Councilmember acting as Chair shall have control of the meeting at all times. All comments or questions by members of the public, council member, or staff are to be made through the Chair. There shall be a five-minute time limit per speaker per meeting, and it shall be called public comment. Public comment shall only be permitted if it is specifically listed as an agenda item for the meeting, and only at the time when it is so listed. The Chair shall have the right to stop any speaker during public comment who is being repetitive or confrontational, or who makes any personal rude or slanderous remarks about anyone, or who raises any issues concerning personnel matters. Any person failing to abide by these guidelines, or who is otherwise disruptive of the process, in the opinion of the Chair, will be asked to stop immediately, and if the behavior persists, the Chair may ask them to leave the meeting, or may have them removed. Anyone that would like to come and speak to the town council, please state your name and address? Anyone?
Catherine Camera, Thirty-One Cottage Place in Oakville. I'm starting my timer. There, okay. So, one thing I, wasn't clear, in your rules for public participation, Mrs. Russ asked if, if it was, I think if, if you could come back again, and you said, no, it's five minutes for the whole meeting. But that doesn't answer the question of, what if I talked for two minutes now, sat down, and someone brought something up that I wanted to comment further on? Do I then have another three minutes? So, I know you don't answer and tell us now, but that's something to be thought about, and maybe let us know the next meeting when you're giving us the information. Second thing I wanted to say is, as I understand it, there will always be a police presence at the meeting here, and I fully appreciate that, because I'm someone who does not feel comfortable in the town hall. So, I would assume that we have the chief and the, and the deputy chief. I know he told me the last time that as long as he's here, we're not taking someone off the street. So I think that's a great idea. But I also have asked, at meetings for the planning and zoning, sometimes they have somebody there, I guess, when they anticipate a large meeting. It's not all the time, but I think that that's a, an important meeting also, to have a police presence at. So I don't know if that could also happen on a regular basis. Excuse me, I need a drink here. Excuse me. So I don't know what, I don't assume that any of you know a lot about legal cases, but I know Mr. DeBona would understand this. There's something in, when you have a case pending, where you can file requests for admissions. And requests for admissions, you're given thirty days to either admit them or deny them. If you do not do anything with those, and, and your time lapses, and you don't ask for an extension of time, then they're all deemed admitted by the court. So, we, the taxpayers of Watertown, there's a case going through, it's very quiet title, going through the courts now, where the plaintiffs filed a request for admissions, and the town didn't do anything about it, and then tried to ask for an extension after they were due, which is not appropriate, and it was denied. So my question is, I'm not sure how we're monitoring what's happening with our legal counsel, as far as, you know, what's going on with court and everything. I mean, these are, that, that's something that's not a good thing for the town. And this is not a personnel matter, because you appoint the town attorney, so I feel I can talk about this. But what is your criteria to know whether or not it's time to look into new legal counsel for the town? Because that is something that I think should be visited fairly regularly, and I think we should know what your criteria is. If something, something like, there's got to be some sort of a criteria by which you measure the job of our town attorney that you hire. And I still have a minute and forty seconds left, if I was to come back, if that was allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Al Michael, Ninety-five Woodbine Avenue. I too want to speak about public comment, and I've got just little things on it. It mentioned in the public comments that comments and questions will be allowed. Now, if it's only for public comments, are you going to answer questions? Is that what it's implying, that I can ask a question and get an answer? So why did you put it in there, if you're not going to do it? Just suggest you might want to just take, allows questions out of the document. I also think reading it all the time is sort of a waste of time. Do you know, the five-minute rule is interesting, if you carry that out for a year, you have twenty-four meetings in a year, five minutes a meeting, that gives every person in town one hour to talk about the town to you people. I think that's sort of lean. But if you want to make transparency one hour a year, knock your socks off. I think you're missing the boat, okay? I think you're making it less transparent. And, and the last issue is, FOI allows multiple ways to handle disruptive people. And Jonathan, I think you were at the ordinance committee meeting when we threw Dennis O'Sullivan out. Well, I think what you did was you adjourned the meeting, which is always available for disruptive people. So, did I understand it, that we're going to have police presence here all the time? I guess another question that's not going to be answered. I'll ask the police chief, he'll tell me. Okay. Request time from the town manager to talk about all the software he's got coming in. I think a lot of it is probably pretty good, but we've had problems with new technology taking years to get implemented correctly. So I'll, I'll make an appointment with him. The health study audit, too, says they want to do an audit, and this is all the years they want to talk about. One of them, we haven't done the audit yet, so maybe this will just take a little longer to get done. How's my time doing?
Oh, good.
Okay, this is all the software, which I think there's a lot of opportunities in there. Can I reserve my time? Again, I don't have to answer any questions, but I would suggest you just take questions off the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the town council? Seeing none. Is there motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a night.
Recording stopped.